Welcome to the February 18 regular meeting in Towne, Niqwa. We'll start off the meeting with approval of the agenda. Being resolved that we hereby approve the regular meeting agenda for February 18, 2025, moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Cross and Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. And then, you're all sent out the minutes. Being resolved that we hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting held February 4th circulated, moved by Councillor Nadeau, seconded by Councillor Cross and Chuck. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, so we'll move into council reports. Deputy Mayor Parrott.
Well, we met with the Association of Montauk Municipality Executive today, both our directors, Mayor Starzak, and we have a very full agenda with the concerns of the municipalities that we have themselves and all the successes that we've been having and, you know, how we've solved their problems and that. So it's very well received. President Kathy Valentino was quite appreciative of all our efforts and from here they went to Mentoo Odana and then to Tamalondosa and they tour around the province so that they get a a ground zone feel of what is going on in each of the municipalities. You know, this is further supplemented by Mayor Headley and his group of all the heads of council for the Midwestern District, they meet monthly as well. So the one thing you can be assured of is that we're accessing and sharing as much information as possible for our benefit at the time.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a short one. So the winter festival was postponed for this past weekend. It was minus 36 and moved through the day on Sunday. So due to the extreme temperatures, it has been rescheduled for this Sunday coming up, February 23rd. Everything starts at 1:30 PM with the Polar Bear yoga. There will be Escape with the Titans in the afternoon, an obstacle course, and then there is free hot dogs and fireworks into the evening, so.
What time are the hot dogs and fairness?
I believe the hot dogs are starting at 6:00 and fireworks will be basically as soon as it starts, I think it's 7:30.
Forecast is plus 3.
Yes, it's supposed to be beautiful, so it was a very good decision.
Okay, perfect, thank you. How's the weather in the Gulf?
Yeah, so February 10th, the WMRL Library Board, we met and we had a strategic planning session. And just to let you know, we have on our strategic plan that bookmobile. However, I found out at the meeting that the grant that we were going to utilize to get that underway, it fell through. So we're looking at climbing up a hill unfortunately for that portable bookmobile. Also, we talked about our regular increases and how the library board itself sees us being progressive where we continue to increase and I was trying to put a little bright side there just saying how a few of our municipalities are feeling tightness and how it's not necessarily something we need to push too quick because we've been expanding our budget year to year ever so much constantly and just, you know, something that we need to take in stride. So just to let you guys know, I also on February 13th attended a Spruce Plains Justice Committee meeting. I don't always report on those because a lot of that is confidential, but we've got some new positions on the board and we've got, we're always looking for members and right now we're just continuing to see how we can expand that particular committee. Our AGM is scheduled for April for the Justice Committee and that's everything.
Thanks. Stephen, Councillor Gerard.
February 10th, Finance Committee met, sat down with the administration. We have started to review the initial, I guess, spending requests from the various departments. When we start looking at anything from infrastructure to recreation and across some of the other, I guess, some of the other requests from the community. We're starting to summarize those numbers. We're going to be starting to, we see some new challenges coming online with that. Niqwa's great growth has been fantastic. We're now in the process though of expanding out into new regions of the community, which takes some significant infrastructure investments. And we're going to see that come online as we move to service up the area where the future hospitals can be where we're starting to talk road construction, water and sewer. One of the things as part of a requirement by the province is that there's a overall, there's a $6 million contribution towards that project. Not saying that that falls 100% on the community of Niqwa, but it is to be shared amongst Niqwa and surrounding communities. Niqwa will be at the forefront of expenditures because of what we have to do for servicing infrastructure. So we did meet, we tasked the administration to go back and squeeze some pennies and see where we can take a look at and we're going to be meeting again in the coming weeks and see that we can manage where we need to look at taxation with the growth that the community's experiencing. So it's going to be a very balanced approach to make sure we make some very calculated investments within the community.
No offense, Gerald, it's, no, you're right. It's exciting to be in a community that's growing, but along with that is a lot of challenges and at the end of the day, we have to pay for it as well. Okay, anyone else? If not, we'll move on to Manager of Operations.
Thank you, Mayor Headley. So luckily we're somewhat quiet, I'm not going to be too disappointed with that, but as Councillor Gerard mentioned, we do have a budget meeting. So we'll just kind of refine some of the requests that councillors had at that meeting and ensure that we can work with him with reasonably acceptable sort of things. Other than that, there's been plenty of planning happening. I was thinking of this giant project for 20. There's been a lot in the background, if you can leave them running around me. Also with the hospital site infrastructure on there and ensuring that all that's going into play. There's probably a progressive rate of public health committee meeting with amount of infrastructure regarding the intersection of Highway 16 and the junction of the new hospital entrance. So there are the works of planning that up and getting it tendered. So we're optimistic that they can see that intersection open up and completed by late summer, early fall. So like I said, other than that, we have plenty of projects that we're working on. So it's consulting, receiving quotes, all that stuff, getting all that stuff prepped up so that we can continue to be moving along in a good pace here.
Yes, even in November, there's a lot of things up in the community. Great, thanks, Stu. Okay, moving on to finance. Calling Special Service Plan.
So you have attached to your agenda a property special service plan. It's going to be implemented for the positioning the garbage expenditures into a special levy on taxes. This basically allows more of a user pay system based on volumes as opposed to putting it all on the tax base, which, you know, a decade ago was generally the practice. So the increases that we're proposing are reasonably modest. Just so you know, total expenditures for garbage recycling collection and of course, the bigger number comes in when we actually landfill in Evergreen Environmental. There's a big cost to landfilling garbage. So our total expenditures are $633,000 for garbage and recycling collection, transportation and disposal and landfilling at Evergreen. We actually recover, in 2024, we recovered 27% of that by way of receiving grants from the Mountain Multi-Stewardship Association, from the RARs grant and also some of that came back from specifically from contractors that took their construction and they're all there and then paid that for receivable. The bylaw last year collected for us 64% of those total expenditures, or roughly 406,000, and general mill rate then only 8% was borne by general mill rate at that particular year. As we move forward, the numbers will be very similar. We're going to collect roughly 6% by general mill rate, or 40,000. We're going to have 461,000 collected in the special service plan and a total recovery of 165,000 from the good plugging that we get from recycling and whatnot. So people are going to see modest increases to their rates based on usage. The biggest thing is when you look at this particular bylaw, we've looked at doing, in our research, it was shown that the multitude of communities actually do an equal rate per dwelling unit and equal rate for commercial, if they have to do commercial garbage. The rate for dwelling unit 2024 is $112.55. That's actually going to be 125 per dwelling unit. It doesn't matter where your dwelling unit is now, it's an equal across the board. Everybody is going to pay the same thing for their garbage and recycling. Ours at $125 is still extremely modest. The research that we conducted in communities that were very similar, our rates of up to $170 per year plus. Even in our neighboring municipality, the rate is over $140 and you still have to transport your garbage there. So these are pretty reasonable rates. Out of $125 per residential dwelling, $108.72 goes directly to the contractor as per the bid we received last year for collecting garbage. The difference being that between $112.55 and $125 is the contribution towards the tonnage that gets tipped at Evergreen Environmental. And I would suggest that that small amount of money between $112.55 and $125 does not anywhere near cover what the average person would send to the landfill in a year. Our rates should probably be more realistically, you know, upwards of 140, 150 to even come close. But we were able to make this work with the numbers we have, so we're happy to propose the modest increase. And so far as taking a look at particular buildings that are nonprofit and assisted living support housing, there's four units until being Altmaner, Yellowhead and Mackinson 1 and 2, that we look at being more of a combination of people that live there and the fact that a lot of them will each in a similar dining room and whatnot. In blank areas across the province, they actually do a reduced dollar value for these particular units because they wouldn't generate as much garbage as others. And we're offering then a 60% of the charge of prescribed rate of $125 for $75 per residential dwelling. Then when you go to commercial, for one set of cars, looking at the volume that you would get distributed and take to the landfill every week is $365. And then you can go up in increments on the double set and triple set based on volume, modestly appropriately based on what you're landfilling at the landfill. And then of course, there's some anomalies in there, whether you have large bins and whether you dispose of your large bin, you know, once a month or twice a month or five or more times a month. And looking at those with respect to the amount of garbage that gets landfillled and fills up the Evergreen environmental landfill out there. Just for interest sake, it costs about $800,000 to dig a bin out of Evergreen. That's how Evergreen recoups their monies to run the landfill out there and fail the staff. So the tonnage charges that we get charged for all of the garbage that goes out there, that is incorporated into these rates to try and get as close as we can and as possible to user pay for what you are landfilling. And of course, the anomalies, of course, highlight, we charge them a rate based on what they stand out there. It's significant compared to everybody else clearly and around $90,000. And then for every vacant parcel of land in the Towne, Niqwa and a railway property, we have a nominal fee of $2 assessed to every parcel. And basically, we collect roughly $500 some dollars on that and we see the last time we put this bylaw forward. The reason for doing that is we do massive town and mine cleanups quite often where we purchase the garbage bags, we purchase the gloves and all of the types of things, you know, might require a shovel or whatever it takes. That bits of money that we do get in and goes towards making sure we can cover the cost of cleaning up properties that otherwise nobody's paying attention to. So that in summary is where we're at. There will be a public hearing on this. So you're going to prove this tonight basically saying that you're supportive of this. It does not mean it's the goal. There will be a public hearing on March 11th. There will be a hearing from the public to see if there's any opposition. Hearing done, you can get first reading that night. After that, this goes into the province for their review and analysis and then of course, they measure it based on whether there's any objections. So at this point, we're just trying to get it into the queue and with modest increases and I think we'll be pretty successful in getting something proved that really is just continuous of what we did for the last five years.
March?
11th is the public hearing. We have to have special meaning to line this up appropriately with the budget process that Councillor Gerard has speaking about because we cannot issue tax notices until this is settled. Is there any questions?
If not, resolution reads, being resolved that we approve Special Service Plan Number 012025, providing the continued collection and disposal of solid waste and recycling for the Towne, Niqwa in part as special service. Moved by Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Nadeau. All in favor? Opposed? Where should we do business from?
The first one is the Niqwa Area Disabled Persons Association. This is for your discussion. A letter received from the Handyman Board proposes that they were requesting a $1.80 per capita donation of the organization for the 2024 budget and future years to be considered. As you recall, we defer it from 2024 when we did receive it because our budget was already established and our president would suggest that they get deferred to a year when we can actually have some time to discuss it. So based on $1.80, if you are interested in approving that, 5,685 to the population. So the total would be $10,233 for 2025. And I would suggest based on the request and attendance of the board at one of our council meetings, meetings that spoke very importantly to the ability to make sure that they have room for capital expenditures. The recommendation in the resolution is that of that money that we hand over, if you choose to do so, two thirds of it gets set into a reserve to make sure capital expenditures can occur.
Any questions on that? Councillor Gerard.
Well, I would just like to speak to it. You know, this is a new funding request to the town and it's not something that we've done historically. I think really what this was in terms of council, it's not to say that we weren't spending money in support of the handyman services here. The last few years, we have had to do some special contributions to that to make whole, I guess, some operating expenses of operating that service. What is unique about this is that we're trying to put this into the budget as a proactive line on the budget as opposed to a reactive, which has been how it's been historically. The other side of that too is that there is an expensive asset that will need to be replaced and that is the handyman. And listening from the presentation, councillors and that through the air, we're talking, you know, previously there was things like mini vans and that, that they could use and they had some of the lower cost solutions. The replacement of a handyman in our community, especially with an aging community, we're talking now a six-figure investment. So at contributing, you know, this value, it will be modest, a modest contribution towards that. But I think trying to plan it as opposed to react to it, I think, and I think that's always been the goal of the council, Finance Committee and the committees that run that there is to plan for it as opposed to react to it. Just so we don't get caught, we don't have to shortchange other services in an emergency to make sure that we can provide those services to, through the handyman.
Almost. Okay. No other questions? Resolution, being resolved that Towne, Niqwa approved a contribution of the $1.80 procreated to the Niqwa area. Disabled Persons Association amounting to $10,233 for 2025 in support of handyman service. Further, being resolved that a condition of the funding required that at least two thirds be set aside into a reserve account for the purposes of replacing capital equipment. So moved by Councillor Sisley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, and clinic?
So the next one is the Beautiful Plains Community Clinic Recruitment and Retention Committee. They're looking for a funding increase, so probably for greater than a decade now. And I don't remember if it was 2013 or 14. Council committed a $2,500 a year for the purposes of recruiting and retaining doctors. And for the years, that money has been used to attend, you know, events in, you know, whether in our province or otherwise, to try and encourage doctors to want to come to Niqwa or at least come have a visit. And there are different things that might move us along and be effective in securing doctors here. So more recently, as we all know across the province, there has been a big move and a push to get doctors into your communities. We all know that they're lacking, there's a shortage. So the request is that we look at $2 per capita or $11,370 for 2025 to help bump up the funds in that particular bank account because the things they need to do, you know, $2,500 is getting a little old and a lot less than what they really do need to function over there. So somebody else might want to speak to this as well. But the resolution speaks to the fact that we do that in our budget from this year.
Deputy Mayor.
Well, this committee is highly responsible for the large number of doctors that we currently have with what is going on. We still need to have more doctors. I think we're around nine now and we're looking to have a total of 18 once the new hospital is up and running. And with this, we're hoping to also have our doctors work in the surrounding communities as well a couple of days a week so that we're more of a regional group of doctors.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, resolution reads, being resolved that we hereby approve an increase in funding to Beautiful Plains Community Medical Clinic Recruitment and Retention Committee to reflect the value of $2 per capita commencing in 2025 and amounting to $11,370 in support of their efforts. To actively recruit and retain doctors in Niqwa. Moved by Councillor Sisley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Green, Green Fund?
So the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, their Green, New Simple Fund came up with an intake for grant applications such that they're looking at communities trying to address the impacts of climate change and trying to mitigate and prepare for disasters which, you know, impacts the community. So it's about protecting your community, it's about mitigating, quick recovery, that kind of thing. So in 2019, Niqwa actually approved a climate change local action plan that set forth the goals and actions to manage our water, our food, our air, reduce our waste, reduce our energy and increase our climate awareness. So this particular program, when it came forward, is allowing us the ability to improve upon that document that was created in 2019 to speak more specifically to climate adaptation, reducing risk and mitigation and recovery. That document in 2019 did not speak to that and because now, as we all know, in 2020, the massive disaster we had with the flooding and then of course, in 2022, more flooding. It's recognitionable where we need to go to address what risks we have. On the plate last year, which came to us more frequently than we'd like to say, is the fact that the lightning strikes that occurred in our well sites are taking down the ability of our communication system to reach our water plant and then of course, transfers over to our tower. Where at one point, because the communication was down, we actually overfilled the water plant. So we understand that as climate impacts become more severe, our document has to speak to that. The importance of having that document speak to that is then we can use that document for an application into the next round of funding for capital improvements under the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. That would help provide, if we get it and be successful, money for infrastructure planning. Our plan at that point with having this document put away and under our belt and updated is the fact that we're going to apply for the installation of fiber optics between our wells and our plant and all of our water infrastructure so that it has no chance of going down in a lightning strike. So I think what, two, three times we've hit with lightning? So not only has it cooled down, but it's very costly to get everything up to speed and repair everything you need to do. So this is just one step in getting us to try and get the firework to the wells and improve upon that and we're asking for your support in this resolution to make that application, to update that 2019 plan, to speak to where we really need to be at current day and in future.
Yes, certainly. We've been trying to mitigate against lightning strikes and how many there's been, so that's under. Okay, any other questions? Okay, resolution, whereas the Towne, Niqwa approved a climate change local action plan in 2019, set forth goals and actions to manage water, improve air quality, reduce waste, reduce energy consumption and increase climate awareness. Whereas the town is desirous of evolving, that document to include a focused assessment on the potential risks to Niqwa relative to the increased impacts of severe weather events. And whereas Niqwa's commitment to document and take action on climate preparedness, adoption and mitigation measures will enhance community resilience and improve Niqwa's ability to withstand and recover from climate impacts that threaten the community and its infrastructure. Therefore, being resolved that the council of Towne, Niqwa supports an application to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Local Leadership for Climate Adoption Initiative to update the existing Climate Change Local Action Plan to move an inclusive document that incorporates local climate related risks and improves upon the community's ability to prepare for, adapt to and mitigate climate related disasters and allow for timely recovery. Moved by Councillor Nadeau, seconded by Councillor Cross and Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Retaining wall. Name it, Stephen, did he?
Sure, this is part of our Hamilton Street project where they're going up. And it looks like we're digging a tunnel, but we'll get better. But as part of that, we will also protect against the one property that we're requiring a retaining wall. Is that a scope of SBC because they were just recently the role design and a retaining wall portion needs a structural engineer designer? So SBC subcontracted this portion out to Tetra Tech. We discussed a few different options and it looks like we go up with concrete retaining walls, the most feasible option, slightly pleasing, pretty straightforward, simple, so. But we still need to be exact so they can stamp this retaining wall for us.
Great.
So just for clarity.
Did I read this about five, five feet high?
Excuse me. The portion of the design, it will be about four feet, but I want clarity so if we extend the wall to reduce the slope on land, could that wall be extended higher? So there'll probably be a broad range on the design. So it could be from four feet up to eight feet, it's acceptable. The structure will handle that much fill and that much threat with height. Yeah, the essential of the retaining wall, I think, the design now is about four feet.
At the length of six feet five. So just for clarity, this is just the design, give plants $9,500 and of course, they would come on site at the time of construction for an estimated cost of $3,000, which would involve traveling time and mileage and things like that.
That's on materials. That's on materials.
Yeah, and it does. Okay, resolution reads, being resolved that we accept the proposal of Tetra Tech to complete a detailed design of the approximate 65 meter length of retaining wall to be installed at the west end of the new roadway through the southwest 341415 in the amount of $9,500 plus time and materials for services provided to oversee construction at an estimated cost of $3,000.
So just for clarity, materials being associated with Tetra Tech, that's what I'm saying. So just for clarity, materials needing associated with Tetra Tech, that's what I'm saying.
You don't have that kind of video.
Yeah.
That was long read for it.
Yeah. Okay, move by. Uh, Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Period. Okay, so we're at the end of our meeting here, so will any additional business? Seeing none, be it resolved that the council of the town of Niqwa can now adjourn this regular meeting at seven-thirty PM. Moved by Counselor Costin Chuck, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Period.